I'd like to call this October 2nd, 2012 City Council Meeting to Order. Megan, would you read the role, please?
Councilwoman Dolan?
Present.
Councilwoman Fire Robin? Mayor Staton?
President.
Councilwoman Shoemaker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Zandi?
Yes.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight for attending our meeting and your interest in city government. There'll be a number of opportunities to speak on matters of the city, and at each point when the time arises, I will indicate that for you to approach counsel. And tonight, I will be doing the invocation. I don't thi-- I think Wayne Sheridan was going to do it, and I don't think he could make it tonight. So I'll be doing the invocation, and Troop 108 will be doing the pledge. Please stand. Father, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come before you to conduct the city's business. Thank you for the opportunity to meet in public and have transparency for our meetings. Please guide us throughout tonight, make us understand the full potential of what we can do. In your name we ask. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Broughton, do we have any additions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor. The agenda is complete as distributed last week.
Thank you. Tonight, we have three proclamations to read, and the first one is proclamation for the Friends of Steel Creek Nature Center and Park and the 15th Annual Wildlife Weekend.
Whereas the Friends of Steel Creek Natural Center and Park Organization is devoted to supporting and promoting the natural aspects of our park and its nature center. And whereas the Friends of Steel Creek Natural Center and Park work diligently to aid the Steel Creek Nature Center in reaching its defined mission of becoming a conservation center within the community of Bristol, where land and people can be united for scientific, cultural, recreational, and educational pursuits. And whereas the Friends of Steel Creek Nature Center and Park work to protect, preserve, catalog, and manage the park's natural resources. And whereas this organization strives to develop natural history and conservation education programs in cooperation with schools, colleges, hospitals, youth groups, and adult organizations, which will aid in developing and understanding and appreciation of nature resources. And whereas they cooperate with national, state, county, municipal, and private natural resources agencies in providing an outdoor laboratory in which to demonstrate natural resources problems and management techniques. And whereas Friends of Steel Creek Natural Center and Park assist in providing opportunities for individuals and family hobbies, providing trails and facilities so that individual and family groups may visit the center for the recreation and enjoyment of being in the outdoors. And whereas they have worked to develop a volunteer program and coordinate fundraising programs for the expansion of the nature center and park. And whereas the Friends and Steel Creek Nature Center and Park are commended for their efforts in assisting with the 15th Annual Wildlife Weekend to be held on October 12 and 13, 2012, at Steel Creek Park. Now therefore, Joel Staton, Mayor of the City of Bristol, Tennessee, do hereby recognize the Friends of Steel Creek Nature Center and Park and tremendous services they provide to the Bristol community, and encourage all citizens to enjoy the many amenities our park has to offer. This is the second day of October, 2012.
And Ms. Shurmur, Friends of Steel Creek President is in attendance to accept this.
Thank you. As President of the Friends Group and on behalf of our Friends Board and members, I thank you very much for this proclamation and recognition. As City Council members and staff, you're familiar with the precious gift that we have, our municipal park. Stacy Grayson Memorial Park at Steel Creek is like a small child unable to defend or protect itself without help. Friends' mission is to maintain, protect, preserve, enhance, and expand the nature center and park for the current citizens of Bristol and future generations through educational, recreational, cultural, and scientific pursuits. The Friends of Steel Creek Nature Center and Park was formed in 1997 by a recommendation presented by the Steel Creek Nature Center Vision Committee appointed by City Council. We are a nonprofit volunteer group that has helped set and successfully accomplished many groups working with the Park and Recreation Department's staff and the commissioners. To name a few of our contributions to the park are the Arboretum, co-sponsors of Wildlife Weekend, the kiosks, trail bridges, the fitness trail, scholarships for nature camps, and educational materials and exhibits. And these things would not have been possible without our many members and patrons over the years. We're very proud of our accomplishments and realize there's a lot more that we can do. We want every citizen of Bristol to be aware of and to appreciate the wonder of nature that we have here. We look forward to working with City Council and city staff members to perpetuate and preserve our beautiful vibrant green oasis fondly referred to as Steel Creek Park. On behalf of the Friends, I want to thank you, and I'd like to introduce our board members that are here tonight. Isabel Ladd, Michelle Sparks, Chris Lancaster, Becky Wilkerson, Sue King Marshak, Harriet Locke, Sherri Willinger, George McClellan, and Robin Fire Robin, and myself. Thank you very much.
The second proclamation is Fire Prevention Week, and David Shoemaker will be reading that, and Assistant Chief Jack Spurgeon will be accepting that.
A proclamation designating Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Bristol, Tennessee is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires kill more than 2,600 people in the United States in 2010, according to the latest research from the nonprofit Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to more than 369,000 home fires. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas only one-third of Americans have both developed and practiced a home fire escape plan, whereas almost three-quarters of Americans do have an escape plan. However, less than half have actually practiced it. And whereas one-third of American households will escape plans in place, with escape plans in place estimate they would have at least six minutes before a fire in their home would become life-threatening. However, the time available is often less. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Whereas Bristol's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas Bristol's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the Fire Prevention Week 2012, October 7 to the 13 theme, "Have Two Ways Out," effectively serves to remind Bristol residents to develop and practice a home fire escape plan during Fire Prevention Week and year-round. Now therefore, Joel Staton, Mayor of the City of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim October 7 to the 13, 2012, as Fire Prevention Week in Bristol, Tennessee, and urge all the people in the city to practice their home fire escape plan during Fire Prevention Week 2012 in support to many public safety activities and efforts of Bristol's Fire and Emergency Services. Signed, this is the second day of October, 2012, Joel Staton, Mayor of the City of Bristol, Tennessee.
On behalf of Chief Barnes and the Bristol Fire Department, we'd like to thank City Council and City Manager for their continual support of our efforts to present our public education programs, our best program, Bristol's Essential Safety Training. And with the fact that our community is not exempt, that we've already found out this year with these deadly incidents, that, you know, practicing and planning to have two ways out is very important. So we want to take the time to have our open house to kick off Fire Prevention Week on October the 6th from 10 to 2 at our central fire station. To be able to get that word out about practicing and planning those fire escapes, because time is essential, and being prepared for those incidents that can concur without a moment's notice also increases your survivability in fire incidents. So that's what we'll be promoting. We'll have a lot of activities on October the 6th, as well as refreshments. So come out and join our efforts so that we can present having two ways out. Thank you.
The third proclamation is proclamation to recognize Walk to School Month, and Dr. Gally, Gary Lilly is in presence to accept this. Whereas the lives of hundreds of children could be saved each year by communities making pedestrian safety a priority. And whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in the rise rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk or bike to school offers an opportunity to build activity into a daily routine. And whereas driving students to school by private vehicles contribute to traffic congestion and air pollution. Whereas an important role of parents and caregivers is to teach our children about pedestrian safety and become aware of the difficulties and dangers that their children face on the trip to school each day, and the health and environmental risks related to physical inactivity and air pollution. Whereas children, parents, civic, and community leaders around the world are joining together to encourage a healthy lifestyle that includes walking and biking to school. And whereas Walk to School Month activities are planned for Anderson Elementary, Fairmount Elementary, Holson Haynesfield Elementary, and Holson View Elementary. Now therefore, I, Joel Staton, Mayor of the City of Bristol, Tennessee, do hereby claim the month of October, 2012, as Walk to School Month in the City of Bristol, Tennessee, and encourage a healthier lifestyle that includes walking and biking to school this month and throughout the year, done this second day of October, 2012.
We do have more and more students who are walking and biking to and from school. We have parents that are organizing walking school buses in their neighborhoods. That certainly is more healthy for those students. It helps build a sense of community and unity in those neighborhoods, and it does lessen the amount of traffic congestion at the schools. So that's a win-win for everyone. On behalf of the school board, we'd like to thank you for this. We also would like to thank Rex Montgomery and other city staff for their works with the Safe Routes to Schools grants that have improved many of the sidewalks and made this possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Presentations. We have no presentations tonight, so we'll move to public hearings. So we have three public hearings, and the first one will be Amendment of 2012 Appropriation Ordinance. Mr. Broughton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first public hearing, as mentioned by Mayor Staton, is a public hearing on the Amendment of the Fiscal 2012 Appropriation Ordinance. That's for the fiscal year that ended June 30, 2012. The appropriation amendment is being sought because of additional spending needs that occurred during the fiscal year. The total increase in the appropriation that is being sought is $785,000, and that can really be identified for a couple of major reasons. It included higher-than-expected insurance proceeds from the storms of a year ago. It included additional capital projects, paving of the Haynesfield School parking lot, the Evoque Field parking lot, some additional sidewalk work. We had some additional vehicle maintenance costs. And then the, there was a change in the way we treated redevelopment projects and how the monies flowed, property taxes paid as they flowed in and flowed out. And because of that change in how those needed to be correctly transacted, that increased the appropriation in 2012 as well. The net effect of all these changes is to reduce the fund balance by $135,000, and the difference is made up by additional revenues greater than were originally expected. With that, Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate to seek public comment on the Amendment of the Fiscal 2012 Appropriation Ordinance.
Okay. Is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to address counsel on this matter? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the first public hearing. The next public hearing is on the rezoning of property on the Volunteer Parkway. Mr. Broughton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second rezoning will rezone, six properties are located on the Volunteer Parkway with the addresses as shown on the, on the screen. And the rezoning will take those six properties from either M1, which is our light industrial district, or B1A, which is our neighborhood business district, and it'll change all six of those lots to B3, which is the city's general business district, and is what you typically see on a roadway such as the Volunteer Parkway. Sherri, if you can bring the map up. There you go. You can see the properties are highlighted, all six of those are highlighted in color. The one that's a little difficult to see, there's a sliver of property there on what is the McDonald's site to the, to the bottom of the view graph. That is also included in the rezoning. But this is area of the city that has been commercial for some time, is well-understood to be arterial-type uses, and includes the Pal's Restaurant, as I mentioned, the McDonald's, portion of the McDonald's, Bojangles, the Casa Mexicana Restaurant. It includes also the Quick Lane Tire and Loop Center and the Car Wash Center. So all of those uses that are, have been commercial uses and are typically found in the B3 district on a roadway like the Parkway. The Future Land Use Plan map shows the area, which is highlighted in red. Red designates commercial. So the rezoning of the property to the B3 district is consistent with the expected use of the Parkway, as was last identified and is reflected on this map. The Planning Commission, when it met in August, reviewed the rezoning and recommended in favor of it to the City Council. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, it would be appropriate to seek public comment on the rezoning of property on the Volunteer Parkway to B3 General Business District.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to address counsel on this matter? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Joe Reese. I'm with, at 112 Dale Place. My concern, I'm a fairly new resident to that area. I wasn't aware of what took place 30 years ago there. They tried to put a road in there before. You guys voted and made sure that that's not going to reopen. Our concern in our neighborhood is that they opened Dale Street again.
The, your comment is welcome. The rezoning has nothing to do with any roadways opening or closing, and that would be a subject of a future conversation if there was any plan for that to take place.
Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel? Please come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name's Alan Steele. Live at 109 Dale Place, and I'd like to give the counsel this. Can I approach the counsel? That was the decision in 1978 by the City Council. Mayor Yule easily signed this, closing Dale Place. And I can speak for all the residents on Dale Place. When we don't, you know, want that opened up, we want it to stay just like it is, dead-end road. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing and move to the next one. The next one is the rezoning of property at 120 Maple Tree Drive. Mr. Broughton.
This is a companion rezoning to the one that we just discussed, as it is located immediately on the other side of Beaver Creek from the properties on Volunteer Parkway. Maybe Sherri, you can bring that map up. The areas highlighted in yellow and green are the subject of this rezoning. I might add, for this rezoning, as well as for the other one, these were initially initiated by the staff. So there has been no, this one actually had an interest by the property owner, but, but all of this started out at a staff level. So to the question, by the way, of Dale Street, none of this has come up because of the interest of any property owner on the Parkway to do anything different, or in this case, on the other side of the creek. But the properties there that are being sought to be rezoned are from M1, which is, as I said, our light industrial district, to B1, from M1 and B1A to, I'm sorry. Let me restart. The rezoning on this one is to PRD, which is Planned Residential District. The property has the common street address of 120 Maple Street, and the property is currently zoned R1A, which is a single-family residential district, and M1, which is a light industrial district. Yellow rec, is, reflects the single-family residential piece of the property, and the green reflects the light industrial property. Now this is a five-acre parcel located on a maple tree, as I said, on the other side of Beaver Creek from the properties that we just discussed on Volunteer Parkway. The Planned Residential District, which has been recommended to switch the, both of those, both of those areas to, allows for single-family homes or multifamily homes at a density that is determined based on the adjacent density of the adjacent properties. In this case, the area could accommodate up to seven units per acre. I might add that currently, the property has a number of mobile homes that are located on it, as well as it's used for industrial storage as well. The area has been identified in, next slide, Sherri. The area was identified in the Future Land Use Map, also as commercial, as reflected by red. But upon looking at it closer as a part of this rezoning process, I think the staff and the Planning Commission agreed that because of the topography and because of the creek, the separation of this property from the Volunteer Parkway made sense. And the property was more like the residential property further to the west than it was commercial to the east, and thus the proposal to rezone to the Planned Residential District classification. The Planning Commission, at its August meeting, also recommended in favor of this rezoning as, as presented. With that, Mr. Mayor, it'd be appropriate to seek public comment on the proposed rezoning of 120 Maple Tree Drive.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to address counsel on this matter? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearings and move on. Appearance of Citizens. This is where people have the opportunity to address counsel on any matter that is not on the written agenda. A response probably will not be made, but our staff will look into it. And so is there anyone that would like to address counsel on any matter that is not on the written agenda? Please come to the podium. Is there anyone that would like to address counsel? Seeing none, we'll move on with appointments. And the first appointment is to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we have one candidate, and it's Richard Allison. And would anybody like to speak on Richard's behalf? Well, Richard has come recommended by people that were on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I think he would be a good fit. And mark your ballots and pass them to the right. Margaret's missed, I got a reach.
For the Board of Zoning Appeals, for a term of office, this is an unexpired term that ends June 30 of 2014. Ms. Dolan votes for Mr. Allison, Mr. Shoemaker votes for Mr. Allison, Mr. Zandi votes for Mr. Allison, and Mr. Staton also votes for Richard Allison, who is appointed to the Board of the Zoning Appeals.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Irvin.
The second appointment is for the Tree Board, and we have one candidate, Lori Matthews. Please mark your ballots and pass them to the right.
And for a term of office ending June 30, 2016, on the Tree Board, Mr. Zandi votes for Ms. Matthews, Mr. Shoemaker votes for Ms. Matthews, Mr. Staton votes for Ms. Matthews, and Ms. Dolan votes for Lori Matthews, who is appointed to the Tree Board.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Ordinance and Resolutions. First reading of new ordinance, ordinance 12-14. Mr. Broughton.
An ordinance, ordinance number 12-14, an ordinance to amend Section 7179 of the Code of Ordinances regarding the operation of low-speed vehicles. The, back about five years ago, the city adopted an ordinance regulating the use of low-speed vehicles around Bristol Motor Speedway. That came about at that time because of public safety concerns and the, and the large number of low-speed vehicles that were coming in as a part of the fans attending the race and driving on the roads, public roads, and, and creating a safety issue. So that was the first time that the city regulated such vehicles, and again, that was about five years ago. We've recently had reason to review that ordinance because of what we're seeing of more and more low- and medium-speed vehicles traveling on roads with higher speed limits. A low-speed vehicle is a vehicle that is able to attain a top speed of 20 to 25 miles an hour. And a medium-speed vehicle, that this ordinance addresses, is a vehicle that can achieve a top speed of 30 to 35 miles per hour. Currently, those vehicles are allowed on any roadways except for low-speed vehicles around Bristol Motor Speedway. The proposal, the ordinance that is before you, will be, will prohibit the use of low- and medium-speed vehicles on any roadway with a speed limit that has, is greater than 25 miles an hour. So what does that mean in the case of Bristol? And in our case, every road in Bristol is 25 miles an hour unless it's posted otherwise. And if you look at all of the city of Bristol, we have, I think, 26 roads. And, and if you look at all of the city of Bristol, we have, I think, 26 roads that have a speed limit that is higher than 25 miles an hour. So this would prohibit upon its passage of the use of low or medium speed vehicles on, um, those 26 roadways. And they're the ones that you would typically, that, well, you typically know because you drive them, but it's the state highways, typically seven, I think, of those are state highways, and some of the other roads where the posted limit is more than 25. Now, there's nothing wrong or unlawful to drive, uh, through a, a road that has a higher posted limit. You can be on that 25 mile an hour road and cross a 35 mile a road, and that's legal. But it's simply you cannot move, take that low or medium speed vehicle and drive it on a road that's posted 30 or 35 or 45, such as the Volunteer Parkway. Now, do I have another slide Sherri? Um, golf carts, these are confused, um, with, you know, a lot of times you'll see golf carts. And golf carts are already prohibited, uh, by Tennessee code from driving on public streets. A low and medium speed vehicle actually is equipped with, um, various, um, um, paraphernalia that is similar to a, an automobile, but they don't have the same safety equipment. But golf carts, you know, the things that you would typically see as a recreational vehicle on, uh, on a golf course and are not designed for streets have been and continue to be prohibited on any street irrespective of the speed limit in, in the city of Bristol or anywhere else in the state of Tennessee. Um, so, um, with that, uh, we're seeking your approval to, um, to limit their use on, on those, um, uh, streets that have a speed limit greater than 25 miles an hour. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, and Chief Wade is in the audience as well should you, uh, have further questions regarding his recommendation to do so.
Is there any council member that has questions for staff?
I do. Uh, what happens during rhythm and route that a bunch of golf carts, uh, are used for the festival?
What we have done, and Blaine, you can correct me if I'm wrong. In fact, why don't you come to the podium, Blaine? When we treat the use of those vehicles around the festival as a part of the closed street system, as a part of the festival grounds, and because of the street is closed, the prohibition against using those on public streets is, uh, abated because the roads are technically closed at that time for that event.
Quite a bit of them use the Shelby Street, uh, to transfer goods.
Go ahead, Blaine.
Uh, Mr. Broughton is correct. Those streets are controlled streets. We post signage that they're not even open to through traffic. And it allows us to approve the use for non-street legal vehicles in that area.
Also, uh, during the race, uh, we use the golf carts to go from the campground from east to west and cross the Commonwealth or Volunteer Parkway. Uh, that, if we pass this ordinance, can we?
You can still cross the street. That's, uh, this ordinance does not prevent you from crossing the street.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to address counsel? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Thank you, Blaine.
Yes, my name is Mike Dunn. I live here in Bristol, Tennessee. I'm the owner of Bristol Golf Carts on Volunteer Parkway. Uh, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Uh, on these golf carts, uh, by the way I understand the ordinance, once we take a golf cart and we build it to DOT specs, uh, is that going to be legal? Because we're doing it and we're building it, uh, what the state requires to be done. It's no longer a golf cart, it is considered a low speed vehicle. Uh, therefore I'm at, if you pass that ordinance of the 25 mile an hour, uh, could I still be able to pull out of my parking lot and go to the next street and cross over? I'm definitely concerned for the safety of the people here, but, uh, uh, my company, we're, uh, thankful to be here in Bristol, and we're a growing company, and we've already bought other property here in Bristol to expand. And with these low speed vehicles, uh, most vehicles in the next, in the future to come, we're moving towards electric vehicles, and that's what I do, to build electric vehicles. And we're hoping to grow with Bristol. And I just really want us to think before we start passing something that could actually hinder us and take away from us that, uh, something that we'll have to come back to the board and try to get it passed again. Uh, you know, the 25 mile an hour speed limit is, uh, fine with, I think is great. Uh, but I would like to be able, uh, my vehicles, when they're custom built, uh, the DOT standard, to still be able to sell them as low speed vehicles and be able to travel on Volunteer Parkway to the next right of way to be able to cross over. I would ask you guys to consider that. Thanks.
Thank you. And what is considered DOT standards?
Uh, DOT standards is the, you gotta have a DOT windshield. The tires have got to meet DOT approval. It has to require for the low speed, the medium speed between 20 to 25. It has to have the retractable seat belts. It can't be a seat belt that just comes around you. If you have a four passenger vehicle, it has to have four seat belts on it. And it's, it's pretty road ready safe for what we're building there.
Thank you.
There are all, excuse me, there are also some additional, uh, requirements that weren't mentioned that, that are required, including headlights and turn signals and some other things that make them act more like a regular vehicle, but again, they're not a vehicle by definition.
And we do do that. We do the turn signals, the horn, the brake lights, uh, everything, you know, basically a car has it. You know, we don't have the airbags, but, you know, pretty road standard for the ones we're building, okay? They're not really a golf cart after we do that. Anybody?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
And so the, the carts that you're, uh, building, are they considered to be low or medium speed?
Uh, you know, I anticipate in the future to come that we probably would be building med- medium speed too. Right now, we're building low speed, but as, uh, you know.
About low speed, 25 miles an hour is maximum?
Yeah, the, the low speeds are 20 to 25, but you can travel on a street of 35 mile an hour or less. And, uh, the medium speed, I think you could go on the streets that are 45. You know, that would be up to you guys, but I think if we take it all the way from us, it'd really, you know, hurt my business and things.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel? Please state your name and address, please. At, at the podium.
Um, Kenny Hennard is my name. Uh, my business is right next door to, uh, Mike Dunn's. And I was wondering why this amendment came up now? Uh, he said five years ago was, it was one way, and why would the amendment come up now? Uh, after he's gone into business and tags these vehicles? And, uh, they're registered. But why would the amendment come up now? That, I guess, is my question.
Well, you're, um, you're, you're, uh, Mr. Hennard, your opportunity is to speak to the council, not to have a dialogue, and if the council wants to pursue that further between the chief and I, we'll, we'll, we'll go into that in greater detail.
But you said there was a reason for it coming up now.
Yes, sir. And, and, but again, please respect the process we have, which is not to have a question and answer period. Now, if the council wants to follow up on that, we'll be happy to, to go further on that.
And, uh, okay.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to weigh in a little bit. Uh, the, uh, first off, um, um, a couple, couple of things I'd like to address. You know, the U. Steering Rhythm Roots and, and kind of an exception there because of downtown is a closed area. It's become absolutely essential that we run golf carts and, uh, and be able to just move things back and forth. We, this year, we ran 20 golf carts continuously, uh, including all night long doing security. Uh, if we transported ice or we transported hot dogs or almost anything, they went by a golf cart because it, it's just too crowded to drive vehicles downtown. Um, some of the golf carts we used were, were donated by Mr. Dunn. The Disabled American Veterans transported, um, handicapped individuals from the parking lot to the, to the stages and, and tried to pick up folks and get them as close as they could to, to music so that they could hear it. And, uh, and it was, thank you, on behalf of the, the, uh, the, uh, Music Festival for, for donating those to us, and, and that helped us a lot. Um, I, I quite frankly would like to see more and more use of, uh, electric, you know, low and medium speed vehicles, uh, around, non-polluting, smaller vehicles, able to get around town, uh, without, uh, without firing up the, the big old V8 or the, the giant diesel engine to, you know, run across town a quarter mile and back. Uh, I'd like to see them use more. Um, I, I think what we're doing is, um, the way I see it, uh, making sure that in, in the areas where it's 25 miles an hour, where the vehicles can do the speed that, that they can, whether it's, you know, my street or, or most anything except, uh, the major thoroughfares, uh, to be able to use them and, and hopefully use them more as, uh, as these vehicles become pretty prevalent. You know, uh, many of the retirement communities farther south from us, that's the main means of transportation around the community, and it's in neighborhoods and, and 25 mile an hour streets. So I'd like to see them use more. Um, and, and I guess what we're doing is, is trying to codify something that, I'm a motorcycle person. You can't drive, and it's always been more than 12 and a half horsepower. It's gotta be more than 12 and a half horsepower to ever get out on the interstate. You gotta have, that's the absolute minimum, uh, horsepower that you can get because anything less than, out of 50 cc motorcycle can't do interstate speeds, although they can do 50 miles an hour. Uh, and I think that's what I, I'm hoping that we're doing here, to making sure that we're, we're able to use these vehicles, uh, smaller, lighter, less polluting vehicles, DOT approved vehicles on all of our neighborhood streets and all of our streets, with the exception of, as I say, you know, Highway 421, 394, Volunteer Parkway, Blountville Highway, those major thoroughfares where, uh, vehicles are running, you know, 45 miles an hour and, and that would present a safety issue. So, you know, for that reason, um, I'd like to see more of them, but I, I guess we just need some guidelines, and that's why, um, I, I think this is a good, good start.
Anybody else?
I've watched Mr. Dunn's business grow from a distance as I drive by on the Parkway, and I don't think that we should pass any more regulations that's going to inhibit upon people's rights or upon businesses in Bristol.
Can, can I pose a question here?
Maybe.
I know that we're, we're talking about, uh, shouldn't have any problem crossing a, uh, for instance, if you, if you come down, you know, Windsor Avenue and cross over to A Street to come downtown Windsor, and A Street being 25 mile an hour speed limit, crossing over is not a problem. Where Mr. Dunn's business is there, it, you know, I've been in and out of there, uh, that parking lot. It's a matter of just literally pulling out of his parking lot, crossing over and into the turn lane. And I'm wondering, you know, to me, that seems like, that's an acceptable move across the road to, to turn up, uh, another road, but, but I guess we'd have to, we'd have to look at it. I certainly feel like that's something that, um, we need to make some allowance for because it, it's not really traveling to Volunteer Parkway. It's crossing over, and, and I can see people wanting to come and, and get their vehicle serviced, maybe just drive it in rather than having to tow it or, or, you know, bring it on a flatbed or something to, to get service done to it. So, um, is that something that, that we can look at? I, I, I almost think it's acceptable from what we've seen, because it's just crossing over and into a turn lane.
I have, my, my, uh, well, we can provide more, uh, information, uh, second reading. My recollection is Weaver Pike is 25 miles an hour. Where it crosses the Parkway and heads south, you know, to.
A, a turn lane wouldn't be 35 miles an hour.
So, no, 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 I'm, I'm just saying that getting on the Weaver Pike would be, uh, acceptable if my memory is correct, which is, it is a 25 mile an hour road in that section. And so, and I'm trying to remember exactly how that driveway connects physically to, um, that intersection. Uh, but we'll talk about it unless Blaine, you're ready, if, unless you're positioned to talk through it. I'd just have to look at it, at a, a map and just get comfortable with its proximity to, to Weaver Pike. It seems to me it's really close, but I, I can't recall exactly.
We'll have to look at it exactly, but let me expand a little bit on safety, if I can, a little bit. I don't know, but the main reason you're hearing about a lot of DOT standards, that is primarily the, the two safety issues that the DOT standard that covers in the low speed vehicles are for seat belts and, um, windshield. They have no crash data. Those vehicles are not superstructure like an automobile, okay? Golf carts weigh between five and 700 pounds. You add safety equipment, you add tires, you add whatever, it adds to that weight. The cars on Volunteer Parkway through there, we routinely issue summonses over 50 miles an hour. The maximum speed these vehicles can do is 25 miles per hour. Very common, the cars around them, that they're getting out in a traffic, are doubling their speed, and we write traffic summonses all the time for that. Uh, these vehicles are not designed to survive impacts. They're not, they do not require them to have doors. The actual, I have an affidavit, uh, the state of Tennessee, that requires you to fill out to have a low speed vehicle. And I'll read it to you so you know exactly what you're dealing with. You have to have headlights, stop lamps, front, rear turn signals, tail lamps, reflectors on each side, two mirrors, uh, a windshield that meets, uh, the DOT standard, seat belts, top one or two, and a vehicle identification number. That's it. Nothing else that, uh, help you survive a crash. Tire suspension not even mentioned in the affidavit, nothing. Uh, it's very, very difficult to regulate that in a road that is the ability to, um, we have fatalities on that street and have had in regular motor vehicles. You pull out golf carts that, uh, that have been modified to low speed vehicles in the middle of the night. I mean, it's dangerous. Uh, it could be at any time. And there is a perception when you have a low speed vehicle or a medium speed vehicle, and now they're neighborhood electric vehicles, uh, which are, is a new type of vehicle. These vehicles give a false sense of security, but they're fiberglass hulls, and they do not have the superstructure of a regular automobile. That's the key thing here, and that's why they're dangerous.
With the ordinance that we have in place today, these golf carts or street legal golf carts that meet the DOT standards, uh, is it legal for them to drive on Volunteer Parkway currently? Is that correct?
It is currently legal for them to drive all the way to where the 45 mile per hour speed limit begins. They can't drive onto that part.
So anything below 45 miles an hour, they can get their vehicles on the street?
Through state code, anything below 35, 35 and below.
Anybody else? Begging? I think we're ready.
Yes, sir. Councilman Mendolyn?
No.
Uh, Mayor Staton?
Yes.
Councilman Shoemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandy?
No.
Does that mean that failed for a tie vote or?
Died for, like, a three votes.
Okay, moving right on then. Ordinance 12 dash 15, Mr. Broughton.
Ordinance number 12 dash 15, an ordinance amend chapter 74, article 5 of the Code of Ordinances relating to control of erosion and sediment into stormwater system. This, um, um, ordinance is one, um, frankly, I, I debated internally about having a work session on it. Uh, but then the more I thought, and, but we can always do that, uh, based on, uh, the prev, uh, pleasure of counsel after we talk about here at first reading, but the more I thought about it, the more I, I realized this is really a non-event and, except for good things that come out of it. So let me just, uh,
So let me just take a minute and try to explain what this is, and then if the council feels it's needed to understand it deeper, we can schedule this at our October work session as well before it comes back in second reading. Back in 2005, seven years ago, the city came under requirements of the Clean Water Act, based on city sizes. Finally, the city size of Bristol came under the Clean Water Act and the, under the NPDES program. And basically, that required us to do a number of things to protect the waterways of the state, you know, of the US. And as a part of that adoption seven years ago, anything that happened in Bristol came under the state's general requirements, as it applied to erosion and sediment coming from construction sites. The state has recently revised their requirements as it relates to construction sites, things that have to be done, again, to protect, to reduce runoff carrying sediment from a construction site and entering into the streams and the creeks and ultimately in the rivers of the state, to control the runoff, and it applies statewide. The state modified its requirements, and as a part of the state modifying their requirements, it became necessary for the city to adjust our requirements to be consistent with theirs, because we have to. So in the process of drafting this ordinance, when we started, it was to conform our ordinance with the new state requirements. And again, this applies everywhere in the state. It's not Bristol alone acting independent, this applies elsewhere. But as a part of, as we were drafting the, basically a simple language, housekeeping type language, just to change the requirement to satisfy what the state now was requiring, there was an opportunity that the city took advantage of to be, to become under this new program the state was launching, which they called the QLP, Qualified Local Program. And basically, this is a pilot program that we sought out to be designated, where we take over the permitting and enforcement requirements from the state for anything that happens in the city. Up until this time, if the, a construction site involved basically more than one acre, if it had disturbed more than one acre of land, there was a dual permitting process, and you had to get a permit from the city, and you had to get a permit from TDEC. Because we're now a, because they selected us as a QLP, anybody developing in our city only has to work with us, and they're not required at that point going forward to seek a permit from the state as well. So it becomes a much more streamlined process, it's not duplicative like it is, it's cheaper for developer, because you don't have the fees associated with submitting a plan and getting it approved by TDEC. So, and Bristol was selected as one of only five entities in the state to be a QLP. Knox County, Knoxville were two of them, Cookeville was one, Washington County, Tennessee, and then Bristol, so we're one, we're in a select group of only five entities that the state's letting, turning over its responsibilities to the local government. So that's all good. So that was one of the, the first part of this was, well, we're just conforming to what the state requires, we don't have a choice, there's nothing to talk about. Second part is, this is good, because now we're going to take on full responsibility, which will be better for anybody that's developing within our city limits. There is a, there is one change that comes about in the ordinance that we hadn't had in the past, but the state's requiring us to have it, because, as a part of the QLP program, and that is to have an appeals process. Should somebody violate the permit, and as a part of the enforcement, we have to apply penalties for the, a property owner, a construction site, not doing what it has to do and impairing the rivers and streams, creeks of the state. But it calls for an appeals process before the city council acting as a hearing board. So in the event that a construction site was polluting a stream, and they weren't working hard to address it, and administratively, we gave them a civil penalty for violation, and they wanted relief or consideration of that penalty, they would come and, to the city council, and you would act as a hearing board in that case. So that is the one and only, really the one and only change that is new as a part of this ordinance that is before you this evening. So all of this, in my opinion, is very positive, I think, as a part of our efforts to continue to provide a better open door for development, anybody that comes to our city going forward in time. And this won't happen immediately, there'll be a little ramp-up period, but once that period is met and we're in full swing, they will only have to deal with Tim Beaver, Sherri Brown, our staff in the permitting process, to be able to develop in our city. So that's all positive, in our opinion. As I said, if there's any questions about the ordinance and what it is or what it isn't, I'll ask Tim, I guess, Tim Beavers, who's in the audience, to help you understand what this is or isn't. But in my opinion, it's really a housekeeping matter, with the one exception that city council will be a hearing board if somebody feels that a violation needs reconsideration by the council. So we'll try to, I'll try to answer any questions, but if you get very deep, Tim's there to go forward. So we recommend this to you for your approval.
Does council have any questions?
I have a concern that this is going to be another impediment to people doing business in Bristol and construction and that sort of thing. So can you clarify the process of what's going to take place exactly between construction and the city?
Go ahead, Tim.
Really, this is streamlining it more. Currently, we have regulations, and the state has regulations in place, that if you're developing and you disturb an acre or more of land, you have to get two permits. One, you have to apply to the state to get a NPDES permit, and secondly, you have to come through us for a permit, a grading permit ultimately. By this process and the QLP, we're very excited about it, because it takes the state out of the picture. So you're only coming to us with the same stuff you came with before, and it's more efficient and quicker for us to look at and grant an approval and a grading permit than if you were going to both entities. So in reality, we feel it's really quick, quicker by being a qualified local program, and you get to see us versus people in Nashville and Johnson City, so traveling to different places to get a permit.
So it should streamline the process?
Absolutely. I mean, we're tickled to death to be selected, and it should make development, it should make it more seamless for the developers, a one-stop shop, they don't have to worry about going to the state and working with the state to get a permit under this program, and it's just exciting. I mean, we're really tickled to death to be selected as a QLP.
Tim, how long does it typically take for you folks to process an application, and how long do you think it took for the state to do that?
Well, the state has up to 30 days to comment on a permit. We typically look at them in a couple of days at the most, and, but we cannot issue a grading permit until the state has approved and issued that NPDES permit for one acre in larger sites. So like I said, just by coming to us, and us being able to issue that NPDES permit on behalf of the state of Tennessee, we feel like we're cutting the time that people can have their permit at the state for up to 30 days. You know, we're cutting it down to a couple of days.
So that grading permit comes from you?
It would come, the grading permit comes out of codes enforcement, but we certainly look at and approve the grading plans associated with those.
Before, it was 30 days with the state, then it came to you in a couple of days, so now it's just a couple of days.
It was concurrent before. I mean, we have one in right now that we're ready to issue an approval on, but we have to wait for the state to issue their approval before we can issue a grading permit. And so we feel like it's really streamlining it and making the developers get quicker action on their projects, so they can get moving forward quickly. And another good thing Jeff mentioned it, is the state currently charges fees for the application for that NPDES permit, and we hadn't talked about it a lot, but we do not believe there will be a fee associated with applying to us, so it also saves them money. So we feel it's a win-win for them and us both, time and money, and that's just, we're just really excited about it.
Any other questions?
And working with Ms. Sherri Brown's department, they're extremely responsive to the needs of permits and reviews, so kudo to you and your department.
I guess that's all we've got to ask you to. Is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to address counsel on this matter? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, guys. Any other discussion? I guess we're ready for a vote.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Councilman Sheemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandy?
Yes.
Next is adoption of ordinances on the second reading, ordinance 12-11, Mr. Broughton.
Ordinance number 12-11 is an ordinance to amend the appropriation of funds and budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012. This was the subject of the first public hearing this evening, and adjusts our appropriations for the 2012 fiscal year.
Was there any additional questions for staff? Do I have a motion?
Move to per.
Second.
Thank you. Beggin', we're ready.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Councilman Sheemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandy?
Yes.
Ordinance 12-12, Mr. Broughton.
Ordinance number 12-12 is an ordinance to amend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee, by designating certain properties as B3 general business district, properties on the Volunteer Parkway. Again, the topic of our second public hearing, and it'll rezone the six properties previously discussed to be three general business district.
Any questions for staff? Do I have a motion?
Motion to move forward.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Beggin', we're ready.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Councilman Sheemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandy?
Yes.
Resolution 12-13, Mr. Broughton.
Ordinance number 12-13 is an ordinance to amend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee, by designating certain properties as PRD, Planned Residential District. The property at 120 Maple Tree Drive, topic of the third public hearing this evening, rezones the five acres to Planned Residential District.
Any further questions for staff?
Could we just clarify the questions that the attendants had tonight about the use of the road?
There's, I couldn't speak to it, because there's never been a conversation had about taking a road that was closed and reopening it. It's not in anybody's sight. I just think there was just some concern from a legacy of the past that they wanted to bring to the attention of council, but I don't see that moving forward in any way and any fashion.
Thank you.
Would that have to come back before planning if that ever happened?
Yeah, I think it would.
It would, wouldn't it?
We'd have to have some way to acquire the property again, because once it's abandoned, it's gone.
So Michelle, would it come before planning if it happened? Any other questions? Beggin', we're ready.
Motion to move forward.
Second.
I thought we did that, sorry. Okay, we're ready.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Councilman Sheemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandy?
Yes.
Resolution 12-99, Mr. Broughton.
Resolution number 12-99 is a resolution approving a certificate of compliance for a license to sell alcoholic beverages at retail in the city of Bristol, Tennessee. The city has been approached to issue a certificate of compliance for a license to sell alcoholic beverages at 1252 West State Street. Mr. Alpesh Patel is the applicant. The city code sets forth specific requirements that we evaluate when there is a request to be issued a certificate of compliance. It's the first step in a process that the Tennessee ABC sets forth that will allow the applicant to be considered to be issued a license by the state of Tennessee. So what we go through as a city is, we go through a process to let the state know whether or not the application conforms with our requirements, and that's what we're doing this evening. It included a public hearing that was held by the city attorney, public notice that public hearing was published as required. And the city's, the process has us to look to see, are the number of liquor stores that are allowed in the city, do we still have room for more? Is it zoned properly? Is it distance separated as required by our city code and so forth? Well, in this case, our city code allows five liquor stores within the city limits, we currently have four. So there is an opportunity for one more liquor store to be permitted in the city under our current regulations. There's distance separations from other liquor stores, from schools, churches, daycares. The zoning, in this case is B3, has to satisfy the zoning requirements for liquor stores of permitted use. So all of the requirements that we look at internally to see, does this meet the requirements, have been satisfied. There are also some requirements that we have to look at for the applicant. For example, Mr. Patel cannot hold a public office, he cannot be a government employee, there's a background check in terms of felonies, looking to see if he's, if there's a disqualification because of past activity and so forth. So everything that we have done in conformity with requirements have been satisfied. So what the city council now must do is make a finding, finding that the location, 1252 West State Street, is suitable for the operation of a liquor store, and that the applicant's demonstrated business ability is good. The resolution further provides, because we have a finite number of liquor stores that are allowed to operate in the city, the resolution further states that if the ABC, Tennessee ABC, does not issue their license to this applicant by March 30 of next year, your activity becomes voided, and that will allow another applicant, should one appear in the future, to go through a process to try to take that fifth liquor store that is permitted under city code. Mr. Hyder processes most of this, I know Jack will be able to answer any further questions you might have.
Does any council members have questions for staff? Is there anyone in attendance tonight that'd like to speak to counsel on this matter? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to move forward.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, beggin', we're ready.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Councilman Sheemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandy?
Yes.
Next, we have our consent agenda, and we usually do this in a block unless a member would like a item pulled from the consent agenda. Does any member of council wish to pull an item off the consent agenda?
Would you like me to read those first?
Yes, please.
We have seven items tonight on the consented, seven items on the consent agenda includes the minutes of the September 4th city council meeting, the minutes of the September... amendments of the September 4 city council meeting, the amendments of the September 7 city council meeting, the amendments of the September 18 work session, includes resolution 1297, which awards a bid for the purchase of a sport utility vehicle, resolution 1298, which approves a classification of assigned fund balance policy, resolution 12100, that authorizes a highway safety grant from the governor's highway safety office, includes resolution 12101, awarding a bid for the purchase of a skid steer loader, and includes resolution 12102, accepting a grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security under its assistance, the firefighters grant program.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. Now, would any member like an item pulled off the consent agenda? No? Do I have a motion?
Motion to move forward.
I'll second.
Thank you. Megan, we're ready.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Councilman Sheemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandi?
Yes.
Sorry, we were talking.
City manager's report. Mr. Broughton.
City manager's report, it's, well, let me just update city council on the vacancies that are yet to be filled on our boards and commissions. A few of these we've had open for a while, so if anybody would like to step into city government in a, on a board of commission, we have a position on the Board of Building Appeals, we're still looking to fill a position on that. That's a good board to serve on, because it only meets on call, and it's never met. So if anybody wants to be on a board but never have to come to a meeting, that's your board. It's an important board, but it's, it only meets if somebody feels that staff has erred in evaluating the building code. There's a position on Park and Recreation Commission. We have a position on the library, and we'll actually have a second position for the library in December, so a nice spot on the library board. And Board of Zoning Appeals, there's one slot on that board as well, another important board. So we've got currently four positions that are vacant, and the deadline will be the Tuesday, the last Tuesday of the month. So if anybody knows of anybody, please ask them to consider and submit the necessary paperwork, and we'll look forward to processing their application. I'll just remind city council, you know, we have a nice tradition here of having a reception for your boards and commissions, just as a follow-up, and it's always the fourth Tuesday of October, which is the 23rd this year. So please place it on your calendar. I know it's Terry Talbert and her staff host that event, it's always a great event at the Steel Creek Park, so we'll do that again. I think this must be the seventh or eighth annual, I can't remember anymore, but please, please mark that on your calendar, and it's a nice way, just like tonight, to recognize our boards and commissions.
Mr. Broughton, can we request a dessert in the jar for that event?
Request a what?
The dessert in the jar by Mr. T.
One other quick thing, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them now or after the meeting. There were some new banners that went up this week. You probably haven't seen them yet. As a part of our economic development strategy, one of the objectives that came out of that was to try to have more of a gateway coming into the downtown on West State Street. Well, the first part of trying to address that took place earlier this week, when we put up banners on the metal light poles as you're heading into downtown. And right now, it's fall, it's the fall banner, and we'll have one for winter and spring and summer, and basically, it's just trying to make West State Street, as you're traveling downtown, to come into downtown, have more of a, I'm coming to something, this is, I know there's something ahead, and dress up West State Street as a part of that process. So those just went up, and next time you're out, take a look at them, and winter will show up, I guess, in December or sometime around then, and again, a little bit of money, a very little bit of money spent, but image is so important, and I think everybody understands what image means to our community, and I think there's another effort there to address that. With that, I'll be, that's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, before we get to the city council comments, I'd like to recognize a few people. We have Catherine Brillhart from Bristol, Virginia Council, Ed Harlow from Bristol, Virginia Council, Joy from the Chamber was here, is she still here? Yeah, there she is, and Dr. Gary Lilly. And Dr. Lilly, do you have anything you want to tell us on schools?
Just a couple of quick items that the council may be interested in. We are having a full week of fall break next week, which is the first time that we've done a full week, and the reason is because we are offering remediation and enrichment classes to all of our students on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday for those who wish to participate, so we're kind of excited about those additional educational opportunities and anxious to see how many students come out to take advantage of those. The other thing that I'd like to invite council to is, we're having the Tri-City's biggest band festival, or competition, rather, on Saturday, October the 6th, Music in the Castle. Tennessee High is actually partnering with the U.S. Army, and the U.S. Army Band is going to be, going to be there, and they're going to bring their simulator, and we're going to have about 20 bands competing. So it kicks off at 12 o'clock, and we'll finish probably somewhere around 9:00 PM, so certainly all of you are welcome to attend. I hope you can come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're up to city council comments. Anybody want to?
I'm going to fill in for Margaret, if y'all don't mind.
We'll keep it within two minutes.
Margaret never does. Margaret tried her best to be here this evening, folks, and managed, if any of you have ever flown through Atlanta, and when you get to Atlanta and you can't get out of Atlanta, I think Margaret's probably still in Atlanta. She's been trying all day to get home, and hopefully, maybe by now, she's almost there, but I know she tried her best to be here after traveling down to take care of her father, having some health issues in Louisiana. Several things, this is first council meeting after Rhythm Roots, thanks to everybody, great festival, another award-winning year, and Ed Harlow, they're one of our founding members, and it went off as smooth as it ever has, and we appreciate all the 700-plus volunteers that made that happen. Bristol lost one of, one of our dedicated public servants last weekend, this past Saturday, Buddy King, who must be everybody in East Tennessee knows, served on our county commission for a dozen years, a real friend of Bristol, a real friend of the community. Buddy was one of those founding members of the Farmers Market Board. Those early days when there wasn't a Farmers Market Board, you know, several of us traveled everywhere, Terry, you remember, and Buddy was just, he was, he was a larger-than-life individual. He just, he made a difference, he was just a wonderful friend to so many of us, and a true public servant, just a great man that we lost. Bristol's a great sign. If any of you got a chance to go last night and see that lit up, that was a spectacular event. All of us, everybody is connected somehow. Everyone has a family member or friend who's fought breast cancer, sometimes winning and sometimes losing, and for us, Joy, the Chamber, to do that for our community and for everybody out there touched, just wonderful. It's truly inspiring to see that.
Tell them what they did. Tell them what they did about changing the bulbs pink.
You go ahead.
In honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is pink, the Chamber had both sides of town change all of the light bulbs. I think there was 1,300, close to 1,300 light bulbs in the Bristol sign, and they changed them pink last night and lit the sign. It is an awesome site, go by and see it. I can't think of any other time that it's been changed. I used to work for the power company, still do it in heart, but I've never seen it changed at one time like that, and it's an awesome site. Support Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and go pink.
I think there'll be a festival downtown on the 20th of October.
Yes.
Do you want Joy to talk? Joy, come on, tell us about it, please.
Thank you, I'd be delighted. We were so pleased last night to have so many people that came and sponsored the bulbs. If you've sponsored someone's, a bulb in someone's honor and someone's memory, that will be listed in the Bristol Herald Courier on October 19, so you can check that out. But on the 20th, is an event that starts in, at 1:00 in the afternoon with concerts, and it's female-centric, and it is to continue with Breast Cancer Awareness Month. There is something going on in the Tri-Cities all the time regarding breast cancer awareness through the month of October, so please come out on the 20th for that female-centric concert. We've got headliners like Kelly Willis and Suzie Bogus, so this is a big event. We have great supporters and underwriters that are helping us do that. Tickets are $25, and you can purchase those at the Chamber, you can do that online at realwomenspickpink.com. Got to say that very slowly, otherwise it gets tangled. And so we really, we really appreciate the support we have had from the city. Thank you, Mayor, for doing the countdown last night, and we just had a great event, and we hope to see more of you there on the 20th.
Would the entire State Street close for that event?
We are closing five blocks of State Street for that. That is our footprint at this time.
Which five blocks?
Up by the sign, so from the sign on back, and if, you know, hopefully, that we'll sell so many tickets that it will fill the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you are finished now, David.
One other thing. On October 19, we're going to lose somebody that, for many of you, has been the first voice you hear when you call City Hall. You call for a council member, or you call for city manager, first person you speak to when you walk in, sometimes, sometimes you're not excited to be there, you've got a burr under your blanket, and you want to, you want to go talk to somebody. We're losing Barbara Ryan, who's been with the city for decades. She's, she has been the person, Barbara, this summer got married, and is retiring and moving to Kentucky to be with her husband. It's going to be Barbara Zunker now, but Barbara is the person that, behind the scenes, all these many years, makes sure that the city manager, makes sure that the city council, makes sure we do what we're supposed to do and provide, get it there when we're supposed to. She phones me to make sure I show up when I'm supposed to, she has the paper in front of me, she does all of those things that make us do this and look like, in some semblance, we know what we're doing. She puts these books together, she does all of that stuff. Barbara Ryan Zunker is amazing, and she is going to be sorely missed. I just, I just can't imagine, Jeff, you're just going to have to shut the doors after Barbara retails. She is retiring on October 19. If you see Barbara between now and then, you wish her well, we're going to miss her in this community, but she's going off to be happy with her new feller, so we're happy for her. Mayor, I'm done.
You good now? Okay, I guess that's it. I'll adjourn this meeting.